Roy, thank you for this day. Thank you for all the blessings you've given us and be with us throughout this holiday season. Be with those that are less fortunate. Be with those that were killed in a train crash today and be with their families. All these things best to your name, amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see everybody out this afternoon. We'll get started into the work session. I'm gonna start off talking about a few things that I've got. The first thing is the Adeka grant that we got. Some few months ago, I came to the council and talked about putting forth an effort to try to get the city a grant, working with RTI. They were talking about increasing employment by about fifty. So, we got together, went over there, got all the paperwork filled out, went through the process. And so, I got a letter from Governor Ivey over the last week or so, and that grant has been approved. It's two hundred thousand dollars, and it goes towards Highway thirty-five and Scott Street Pumpkin Station for the sewer plant, and that's what that goes for. Now, that's about a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project. So, the other hundred and seventy-five thousand will come out of the sewer plant funds, and they'll pay that part of it. But, two hundred thousand will be coming from Adeka on that, and I think that's great. We've got three major hotspots that we need to get fixed in town, and that gets one of those three spots took care of, and now we'll be working towards those other two spots, you know, to try to get them, you know, fixed over the next year or so. So, I just wanted to bring that good news that we did get approved for that grant, and so, we will be moving forward with that. Of course, we got another grant from Adeka earlier, and it was on Ranch Road. Both of those two projects, it accumulates to about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of grant money this year from Adeka, and both of those will bid out in the spring of two thousand and eighteen. So, we'll be moving forward with those projects. The next thing I have is changing the date for the council meeting in January. It's set up for January one, which is on a Monday. We're gonna change that to a Thursday, January the fourth. So, it'll be the normal time, but it'll be on the fourth instead of on the first. Now, we'll vote on that if y'all want to. We'll vote on that, make that change when we get into council. The next thing I have that I wanted to bring up is everything's going pretty good in the city. I've worked with our accountant and a bunch on this. And we're gonna go ahead and the first week, the first paycheck in January, or the first week in January, I don't know how she'll wanna do it, but it'll be sometime in the first part of January. We'll do a citywide raise across the board, everybody. Three percent raise for the city employees. So, that'll go into effect, you know, first week in January, whichever house. However it works out, I haven't looked at it, so I don't know exactly, but it'll probably start the third, start the third, you know, because it'll probably start on the new page. Do what?
I could bring it up.
Okay.
Is that a form of emotion?
Let's move on from that. The next thing I have is back, I guess this started probably in November or so of the past year of two thousand and sixteen. We started this process of doing some light change out to save some money on our utility bill. Going to the, huh? With every what mattered, we went with LED lighting throughout the city. And so, we've got all that finished. Some of it was finished like a week or so ago, so it's not a full-blown showing exactly what we're saving, but it's probably ninety percent. So, with that, this month compared to last year's month, exactly the same time, same timeframe, is sixty-seven hundred and sixty-four dollars difference in the lower, in the power bills. So, that along with what we done with the phone system, by lowering the phone system, those two utilities, we're saving sixty-seven hundred dollars. I mean, seventy-six hundred dollars in just those two things that we changed. And that lighting will pay itself off in sixteen months. So, we'll be saving that whole amount in sixteen months. So, I just wanted to bring that. I thought that was some pretty good news, along with the grants that we're doing, the lighting we're doing. I think that's some good positives going forward, so. Now, I know Sarah had had a lot of problems with lighting at the library, and I hadn't really talked to her, except she said it was a lot brighter. So, is everything working good?
It's good.
Okay, that's what we wanna hear. Okay, all right, we'll start down there with Mr. Taheri.
The only thing I'm not mad is she's supposed to be here. I don't know, she may be come five o'clock. This girl, she's about thirteen years old, and she raised thirteen hundred dollars to come and do a Christmas shop, a college shop with the Cubs. And they did that Saturday, and they had fifteen kids all over the county. Most of them was from Roseville area, that they carried to Walmart and let them pick up what they wanted. They said they had a ball, saying those kids running the aisles and picking up the toys and all that. Anyway, as a city, we thought maybe make a resolution for Ms... Her name is Ms... I'm gonna try to say it, what did I say? Try again. Michael Swift, is that her?
Margaret.
Yeah. She may come five o'clock, and if she does, we'll present it to her. If it's not, I'm gonna just pass this resolution to give it to her. As a city, pray before appreciation what she done. That's all of that.
Right.
Last council meeting, we had two bid openings. I'm gonna make a motion to neither way accept the bid on the tractor. I'm gonna also make the motion we accept the bid on the pest control company. And I don't see this on the agenda too, but I know as far as we had a bid on the side-by-side also, that we need to rebid, because the spec wasn't right, because it didn't specify the engine. They were wanting diesel. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we
Rebid it.
Rebid the side-by-side.
Accept tractor and?
Yes. Accept the tractor and rebid the side-by-side. And after that, the Bull Bash is coming in January, and we always do a shoot sponsorship for the city of Roseville. It's a thousand dollars, and I'm gonna make that a motion, asking that we do that again. And that's all I've got.
I thought you was gonna bring it up. Who's gonna bring you that?
Byron.
Mayor, you know, you talked to me about them changing the lights out there at the intersection. It's very, very dark out there, and they changed them over to LED. Ricky has just completed the whole city right out there, and we had like thirty-nine streetlights out. There's places that we're gonna need to add some. One of them being at Pineview Drive at the cul-de-sac. There's like seven or eight houses there at that dead end. One of them's gonna be at Miller and Thompson. One of them would be at Fortner. The one at Fortner is Old Thirty-five. It's actually gonna be in the fork of the road there. You can't, there's not a pole around there close, you're gonna have to set a pole for that. We're gonna have to set a pole for that particular light. The other one is down at Shiloh State at the end of the road. Really don't have a cul-de-sac there, but I mean, we always try to have them at the end of the road, intersects. Then we got one at Brown Chapel that right past every road down in that holler, and then around that bridge. Then there's another one right at George Wallace, where we're talking about the other bridge that we gotta replace. Very, very dark in that area right there, so we're gonna add one there. Be one on Seventy-five South across from the storage building. It's gotta have a pole set. The gentleman has agreed to pay for the pole to be set if we take care of the light. He's actually doing some, gonna be opening up a storage area there. Other thing I have is we bid out the turn section, turn like, I'm gonna call it, over the industrial park, where we'll not make such a sharp turn and tire the roads and stuff up. I'm gonna recommend that we take, bring that in tonight, go ahead and complete that. Wiregrass is the one that's gonna get it with fifty-six thousand, five twenty-two, forty-two. CTS Estigation LLC, eighty-one thousand, one seventy-seven. So, I'm gonna recommend that we get Wiregrass to go ahead and complete that. That will give us access to where, if we have to have trucks to go around, any, not being across the Shea Beach Bridge or anything anymore, that will actually take care of that. So, we can't be rapping trucks crying like that. So, I'm gonna recommend that we go ahead and do that and get that took care of there tonight.
Well, I'd be going back fixing that on deal back. Before they messed up.
Deal back.
Yeah.
You talking about the painting?
Yeah.
Yeah, the park from the bridge to Highway thirty-five. There's three or four spots on that road. Yeah, they're gonna got a mark, they're gonna go back and replace it. And they're gonna, out here, and for everybody's information on this, where they put those corners down here at the red light, all that's gonna be took up and redone too, because it was, it didn't go together right for the state. So, all that'll be took back up and redone again.
What was that?
Yeah.
Mayor, other thing I have, local boy, Jeremy Pruitt. We've done this, in my recollection, one time before. He's very partial to Roseville. Every time I've ever seen him speak at the University of Alabama or Florida, or wherever, Georgia, he talked about Roseville, Alabama. Very proud to be from here. I congratulate him, his parents, and I'd really like to see this mayor of the council, when we can get it worked out, give him a key to the city to recognizing him for his accomplishments, in being in Tennessee, ball, and head coach. Y'all gonna have a problem with that.
No, I think it's a good idea.
Why was we ain't gotta wear that colored shirt?
Well, he's well-deserving. You know, the thing about it is, like I said, he's always recognized being from Roseville, Alabama. And, you know, we've had a lot of things, a lot of people, important people here, but getting to be a head coach, like, that's pretty special. So, I commend him and congratulate him and his parents on his, on doing such a good job.
He, in his speech up at the University of Tennessee the other day, he mentioned Pineview, he mentioned Roseville, you know, and so, he's proudly from here too.
Yeah.
There's no doubt. We're proud of him.
He's not the only guy where he came from.
That's exactly right. Derek.
I really don't have anything to bring up, but I do wanna say thank you to the chamber and Ms. Sandy and the Tom Bevel. We had a great turnout, I thought, for the Christmas thing we've had before the parade. I wanna say we probably had over a hundred and fifty kids there, probably.
Over two hundred.
Over two hundred? Over two hundred? Okay. For the first time doing that, I think that was a... I just think it was outstanding, and I hope that we continue to grow. And what you did with the Tom Bevel, Sandy, was amazing. You decorated it great, it looked fantastic. Everybody was in a good mood, you know, it was, it was just smooth. We really appreciate that. I know these gentlemen up here do as well. Really, that's all I got, and just remember to water your trees. We don't want your house to catch on fire, so remember, water your Christmas trees, and Merry Christmas. That's all I got. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. There you go. To go along with what Derek said, I thought the parade turned out real good. It was cold. Marshall, was it cold?
Oh, it's cold.
But Marshall really got the best end of the deal, 'cause he was back on the back, and the wind done going over.
Oh, yeah.
I had my turban on, and he was just...
And he got the all candy out of my pocket, I said.
He had to make it.
Did anybody get a picture of that box over his?
Well, yeah.
We all got a picture of everybody.
But we had a good time. It was fun, we had a good time. Yeah, a good turnout. It was cozy.
Over seventy-something entries, was what they said?
Pardon?
When they were at, over seventy-something entries?
Yes. We had a good...
And like Derek said, the get-together in the Tom Bevel Center at one o'clock to three o'clock for the kids was a great idea, and it come out real good, having that many kids there. I've been there before, afterwards, and it don't work as good, but that before, it was great. And we need to, we need to look at doing that again next year and making it bigger and better.
No, no, we're a little bit weary. We didn't know.
Oh, yeah.
Turnout, but I mean, I know, it just looked better, got the word out before, and the city everybody, I mean, it was, it was great.
Turned out real good.
The kids were happy, that's what it's all about, is making those kids happy, so. I just have one thing, we gotta figure out how to keep them down, I'm a little one of them. Yes. The children, some of the children would drop it. We figured it out halfway through, didn't we? Stickers, put the sticker on there.
I tried to drop mine.
Anyway, I was trying there. But, for the first time doing that, I mean, I was really amazed at the turnout. I mean, it was really into front size.
Yep. Okay, same.
Everything's going well with the parks, we've got our lights back working and the basketball court. That's been redone, so we're good for a while on that. We got our windscreen back up on tennis courts that had been destroyed by the wind. This is super duper windscreen, it's like triple so, we got bands around it. Island about every six inches, so if the wind damages it, we might as well just take it off, by the way.
Take the chain link off or something.
Rebuilt the zip line up to park, so it's ready to go for another, every, how many years it's been there. Everything's going pretty well.
Nobody ride that, dude.
Oh, my goodness. I'd wear it hell. I'd wear it hell. It's constant, you sit up there and you hear it, it's constantly, zzzzz, zzzzz. Never stops.
Every kid, every kid just about wants to go ride that zipper.
And adults too.
Yeah, the adults, I've seen some pictures of some adults, I think it didn't think to be on there.
You didn't get my picture.
Willie?
I thought you were gonna do it. Had a good turnout, had a Christmas party Saturday night, and everything went well. We do have, talk last council meeting about doing a deal with smoke detectors. We do have our first batch of smoke detectors at Fire Hall. So, if you know of anybody that needs smoke detectors, low-income, elderly, anybody like that, let us know, and we'll try to get out and get some smoke detectors. We have a few in the area, and we're gonna try to get out. So, if you know anybody that needs them, let us know, please.
Have you put that on a bicycle?
It's been put in newspapers, radio.
I was really having a big turnout, a big request for it.
So, if you know, if you know of somebody, like I said, low-income, elderly, something like that, that needs some smoke detectors, please let us know. Everything's going well.
Okay. You'll do the resolution?
Yeah, I think she's, are you Michael or Magra?
Margaret.
Is it Michael?
Right.
Okay. You wanna come up here? We already talked about you.
She, she has one there.
She don't have it in.
She has it, it's a total surprise.
This young lady right here, she raised, she raised thirteen hundred dollars for the Christmas for the needy kids. And we had about fifteen kids, and they went to Walmart, and they said they had a ball, picking up toys, and the kids was having fun with the Cubs. And we thought as a city, we're gonna recognize you for what you done. And we got the resolution in here that all the council and the mayor signed it, and we're gonna give it to you.
Let's move over in the middle and get the picture of all of us.
Okay.
Right here.
So, now, you wanna just...
Middle's that, Mayor, we gotta show it now.
Middle's right here, Leon.
Middle.
That's, that's there.
How you doing, Bill?
She said she wanna get in.
Get in your chief.
A little close.
Thank you for your hard work, raising that first.
This is all of that, I guess the rest will be canceled.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
And someday you might wanna go.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Like I said, we kinda ambushed her, she didn't know anything was going on.
That's good, have a surprise every once in a while, isn't it?
I thought she deserved a little recognition for her hard work.
Oh, I see who you're saying.
Oh. You got cheese?
Yeah. Cheese.
Everything's going well with the Christmas party. Thank y'all for that, they got to come Saturday night, we had a good time. Glad y'all were able to join us. Everything's going well. Is, is that starting now?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah.
Everything's going well at the library. Just thank y'all so much for the continued support of our city library, and we serve Jackson and DeKalb County. We think we've got one of the best winds around.
We do.
About how many people comes through the library a month?
Um, it averages summers a little more, usually around the holidays a little slower, but monthly, anywhere from maybe five hundred.
That's good.
That's low, but just, just be safe.
Okay. All right.
Hey, Mayor, I've got one more thing to add.
Okay.
We got three leftover time clocks that we need to surplus, and we'll make it a motion also.
Okay, that's the old card tab?
Yes, the old card tab.
I'm gonna get it to school.
Okay. All right, that'll work. Sandy.
The only thing the chamber has coming up, next month, January eighteenth, is our annual banquet. We are still taking applications for Person of the Year, at least for another week. If anybody would like to submit something, we would definitely appreciate it, and we hope that you all buy tickets and be there.
All right. Will it?
What time you say it was?
It starts at six.
Okay. All right, we'll take about a twenty-minute break.
Seven.
Okay, it's five o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started in... We have Rob Con, Marshall.
Here.
Derek.
Here.
Ricky.
Yes.
Fredman.
Here.
Please, y'all. Everybody's, everybody's here? I was gonna ask you about some last night.
I'll make a motion we accept the minutes just presented. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as presented by the clerk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I talked about the grants, talked about the lighting in the work session, getting the Adeka grant for two hundred thousand dollars. And I think that's gonna be a big part of the wastewater treatment plant, to get that part done, Highway thirty-five and Scott Street Pumpkin Station. The next thing I have is, so I'll make a motion to change the date on the January meeting to the fourth.
I'll make a motion, change the date on the meeting to January the fourth.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second to change the meeting date on January, from the first to the fourth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, I'll start off, start off down on the far end again, like I did long ago.
I don't have anything to bring for the council to...
Do it.
...vow it on, except that resolution we give to that mayor, and Merry Christmas, y'all.
All right, well, you need to make that official, I'm not resolution, just go ahead and make, make a motion.
I'd like the resolution, one, one dash twelve, no?
Twelve.
Twelve dash seventeen B.
Yours is eight.
Eight?
Yours is eight.
Eight.
Twelve, eighteen, twenty, seventeen, eight.
Okay.
Resolution to be adopted by council. I put that in for the motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to adopt resolution, twelve, eighteen, two thousand and seventeen. Have a motion and a second for that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have that resolution. Okay. Fredman?
I'm gonna make a motion on resolution twelve, eighteen, twenty, seventeen B, surplus in three old time clocks.
Second's cool.
Okay. Have a motion and a second on resolution twelve, eighteen B, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and seventeen, excuse me. Getting ahead a little bit. Have a motion and a second on that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm gonna make a motion we accept the bid for the tractor for the wastewater treatment to the cow farmers' cul-de-sac.
How much was it?
Fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
I second his motion.
Right there too, we also have a later stadium from Jane Faton. Then, they've done approve that too with the funding that they have from USDA, that they'll go ahead and push it off and take care of.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this, this piece of equipment will be paid for with USDA funds from the sewer plant. We won't have to be paying for it through the city, through the city. All right, we have a motion and a second to accept that bid on the tractor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the pest control bid from Bama Pest Control.
Okay.
I second his motion, Mayor.
Can you give me a total on that, what it is a year, or do you have that week?
Annual is thirty-one hundred and twenty dollars.
So, what's that?
Two sixty per month.
Okay, all right, we have a motion, we have a second, somebody second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
And I will make a motion that we do our annual shoot sponsorship for the Bull Bash for the city of Roseville for a thousand dollars.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
That's all right, man.
All right, Ricky.
Mayor, I have some streetlights that we're gonna be adding. Ricky Dobbins has just got through completing right out of the whole town. We had like thirty-nine out, and we're gonna add some. One of them is no particular order. One is gonna be at Pineview Drive at the cul-de-sac. One of them will be at Miller and Thompson. The one at Fortner at Old Thirty-five will have to have a pole set, because there's not a pole in that area. One at Shiloh State at the end of that road. There's one on Brown's Chapel, down around that, before that cover's set, that bridge lacked the cover. Then there's one down on George Wallace, uh, where we're gonna have to have the pads and everything changed on that bridge down there. Real dark right in that area. Then there's one on Highway Seventy-five South, across from many storage building. Uh, the guy will actually pay the pole, he's gotta have a pole to put in, he was gonna pay for the pole and us put the light on. He's actually opening up a storage facility there for, be on the record.
I second his motion for that.
Okay.
And I, I, and let me say one other thing too. Uh, I was talking to Mayor Walco, talking about the lights and everything, all these LED lights, we wanna put up now. There, we're getting charged by the wattage, LEDs are a lot more efficient, a lot cheaper, so I want you to make sure, tell you that they understand we want all these LED lights. Other thing I have, Mayor, oh, you-
Please, John, second it.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, to, uh, add some streetlights throughout the city in different places, he has a list of them there. Uh, I will try to go back over that list, 'cause I, I couldn't remember all of them. Uh, so, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, now, go ahead and read.
Mayor, other thing I have, we put out a bid, uh, we had our engineer, Sam Phillips, put out a bid for the industrial development over there in the Dilbeck Road, where we can make that turn lane, where we quit tearing the road up. Uh, we got some grant money to work on that with as well, and the, uh, the, uh, Wiregrass has come in, is low bidder, is fifty-six thousand, five twenty-two, forty-two. Uh, CTS Estigation LLC, come in at eighty-one, one seventy-seven. I'm gonna recommend that we accept Wiregrass recommendation and get that started, uh, to where we can get that completed over there along with that widening of that road, so that'll make it a lot more accessible for those trucks running, coming in and out RTI. So, I'll put that in a whole motion.
Thank you.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to, uh, uh, accept the bid from Wiregrass Construction to do the turn lane at Dilbeck, Dilbeck Road and Industrial Woollard, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? There's, uh, the reason we've done that is, since RTI has rebuilt their building and moved stuff around, uh, they're, like, when they're loading out to go somewhere with parts, it, it comes out of that side of, over on Dilbeck now, instead of on RTI Drive. There's eighty trucks a day that comes out that road, so it's a hard turn for them to make that, that pointed turn down there, where they have to get back on, on industrial. So, that's, this is gonna fix that turn, and that way they will be tearing our roads up, both roads, Dilbeck and industrial, it's starting to wear pretty good where they're making that turn, so that'll help that a lot. Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Alright, Derek?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and put the motion, uh, give, uh, the city employees all across the board a three percent raise, someone go ahead and put that in form of motion.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion for a three percent raise for the city employees, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Make a motion we pay the monthly bills?
Uh, have a motion, pay the monthly bills?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay the monthly bills, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Marshall, you got anything?
No.
Okay. Uh, the only thing else that I, you know, and I talked about this in the work session, is the LED lighting, how much it's done. I think it's a great thing for the city, and, uh, you know, like I said, it, it's gonna pay itself off in about sixteen, sixteen to eighteen months, uh, starting right, starting right now, and so, uh, we're, we're tickled that it's helping us out that much, and so.
I'll make the motion, adjourn, take it.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.